Welcome, everybody. Pastor John Walworth is here tonight from the Congregational Church here in Perry, and he has agreed to bring an invocation before our meeting starts.
Well, Lord, let us pray. Dear Father, we are together here in these council chambers. We ask for your presence, Lord, in these days and times of uncertainty, chaos around the world. We pray, Lord, for your peace to come upon this meeting, Lord. And I pray, Lord, that they would not necessarily do good tonight, but they would do what is right. I pray that you would bless them, encourage them, Lord, in their work, in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Hi, Jen.
Hello.
I wondered if you were on that fire truck?
Right here today?
Yeah, it was about supper time.
Mm-hmm.
Was that you?
Yep.
You like laying on that horn right when you get by my house?
(laughing).
I know that, too.
The Q's even better.
The Q?
They're really, really loud.
Oh, yeah.
We call that the traffic mover sirens.
Hi, Bob.
Good evening.
I think we're all here, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's just about seven. And I'll ask if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Shirley, would you take roll call piece?
Mike Connell.
Jeff Fuller.
Here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Ken Don.
Here.
Sue Hammond.
Here. And Mike Connell did let me know he wouldn't be here tonight or next week, but that's the last football game, so then he'll be back. Looking for approval of the agenda for tonight?
I move that the agenda be adopted as per name.
Second.
We have a motion from Chad seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And then our meeting minutes from last September 21st. Looking for the reading and approval of those minutes.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the September 21st, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
Well, a motion from Larry seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, we've come to a favorite time of the meeting, and that is for the awards, for the Perry Pride Award and Put Your Best Face Forward Award. Mike Connell, who is not here this evening because he's coaching football, did choose the winners of these awards ahead of time. And I'd like to ask Jane Easton of 129 E Second Street, the beautiful White House across the street from the Congregational Church. Yep. You have been awarded the Perry Pride Resident Award in recognition of your efforts in maintaining your home and yard, thus generating Perry Pride. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing all you do.
Thank you.
We'll let Megan get her tea.
(applause). Can you put your award toward me for a second?
There you go.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And now we have the Put Your Best Face Forward Merchant Recognition, and Mike chose Kodat's True Value Hardware. The new guy's in town, so come forward to receive your award. And it's Jeff.
Jeff and Robin.
And Robin?
Yep.
Nice to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And here is your award in recognition of your efforts in bringing pride to the community.
Thank you.[360.12][360.12](applause).
And thank you for all you did the day, the weekend of the tornado.
Well, our pleasure.
You did a lot of stuff, free hot dogs, free chainsaw sharpening, and lots of good stuff.
Whatever we can do, that's the most important thing, you know? We're part of the community.
Yes, you are, and thank you for that. Mike also has some honorable mentions for the residential awards, and there were two houses, 400 Williams and 116 Orchard Street. So congratulations to everybody. It's now time for a public comment. If we have anyone here who wants to step forward and make any public comment. Doesn't look like we have anybody for that. Communications, how about that, Shirley? Do we have any?
I handed out a revised parade policy. We're going to talk about that later.
Yep.
I also handed out the, an email from MML, the insurance company, on what our next check will look like when they submit to us, so just items that are covered.
Very good. Did you want to go through them at all? Do you want to read them, or do you want to just let the council look them over and maybe bring questions next, next time if they need?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Because they just got those tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I just have a few things. We are still receiving donations and hope to continue to receive them toward our natural disaster recovery. We so far have received $12,200. And just a reminder that we do have an anonymous donor who is offering to match 50% of what's collected in donations from September 22nd to the summer 1st, up to a total of $5,000. So.
Is there any location for those donations?
Right here at City Hall.
City Hall, okay.
And you can make it payable to City of Perry, but put the natural disaster fund on their remarks line.
Thank you.
This is the proof or the sign, if you guys want to pass that around. That just came today, and Megan and Shirley and I talked with them and had them make a little, a few little tweaks to it, but it'll be six foot tall and three feet wide. And Larry talked with Scott down at Carl's Grocery Store, and he said we could put it there out by the sidewalk where there used to be a payphone there. There's still a something or other, a stand of some kind, so the DPW guys will affix it to that.
We've got a street light right there that will help illuminate it, I think, as well. Scott's only concern was to not have it block any of their, you know, main sign that they've got their specials and things on, so getting close to a street light going into dark times is a good spot.
Yeah.
And then there'll be stickers that go up as the...
Yep, the vinyl red stickers will go up, and these little lines are $5,000 increments.
Okay.
The $300,000 designates what insurance is projected to pay. $500,000 is what we're anticipating as a grand total of needing to cover in expenses for tornado recovery. So as we go by $5,000, we'll put that in with red. And the material, the signs being put on is, I forget the word, it was something like aluminum, but it wasn't aluminum, I don't remember.
Aluminumite.
Aluminumite, was that it?
Aluminumite.
Say it once more.
Aluminumite.
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 Okay. So he said we could write on that with a black permanent marker if we wanted to indicate anything, if we wanted to write on the side here, projected insurance amount, you know, so just to try to make things more clear. We could, we could add that kind of thing, so that's what it'll be like. It should be here next week. We have, and Shirley mentioned handing out the revised parade policy. The parade was wonderful for homecoming. So many people were in town. They were still going into the football game, trying to get through into the, toward the end of the first quarter. They were still trying to get in. There were so many people. So it was wonderful. But we still had a lot of children and some adults running out into the street to grab candy, which is so dangerous. And we had put on our parade policy that form that's given out to anybody who's applying for a parade permit. For safety of onlookers and participants, candy or other items are not to be thrown into the street. It may be handed out directly to onlookers or tossed to the grassy area past the curb. We've revised it after conversation with Chief Fox and taken out or tossed to the grassy area past the curb. So the application now just ends in regard to what I just read. It may be handed out directly to onlookers. If that fails to keep people from being out in the street during the parade, we'll just have to eliminate candy being in the parade at all. It's just too dangerous, especially those little kids. They get out there, the fire department guys driving those trucks, they can't see down and see those kids.
It's a, it's a big blind spot in front of us. Even, even with two people in the trucks, it's still, still a big blind spot.
Even the school bus that was in there.
Yes, right, yep. So anyway, I just wanted you all to be aware of that and everybody who is thinking of being in a parade. That's everything that I have, so looking now for department head reports. Megan, do you have something?
Good evening. I just have a little bit of treasury update for you. Summer taxes were due September 30th. That was a weekend, so the due date was extended through Monday, October 2nd to 4:00 p.m. Penalties were not assessed for anything received in our office on Monday. Any balances outstanding after that date were applied to 1% penalty. That penalty remains the same until the balance is paid in our office up until February 28th. Anything after February 28th is transferred to the county. Other penalties may apply at that time. So as of today, summer taxes were 94% collected, which was a pretty significant collection rate, I think. New this year was the Parks Village. Our total village on our tax roll was $5,857, which is new revenue to our parks, and to date, we've collected $5,534 of that. And of our city revenue taxes, we've collected just about $700,000. It's still kind of in the process rolling into our, our budget for the general fund because as the money's collected, it goes to a tax fund, and then it's dispersed out to us. So in October, we'll recognize on our budget that we have received at least $700,000. That is pretty much all I have as far as treasury news. I hope to have first quarter budget review for the next meeting. I just didn't have them wrapped up yet. It's awfully early this month.[904.81][904.81](laughing). I do have some other updates for other things I handle here at the city. First of all, Devon's tree is planted and has, today, very well watered.[913.12][913.12](laughing). So it looks nice out there. The bench is here. The plaque has arrived for the back of the bench, but the concrete's going to be coordinated with sidewalk work, so that's still pending installation. I believe last meeting it was discussed that the city will have trick-or-treating hours on Halloween, the 31st, from 6:08. Some downtown businesses often coordinate an early Halloween event. It's called Treats on Main Street. I was recently informed that this year it's going to be Sunday, October 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. I don't have a flyer yet. Once it's shared with me, we'll make sure we share it on social media. Again, it's not hosted by the city, but we definitely promote anything community-oriented. I believe Amy's Diner is the lead on that, if any other local businesses want to get involved. And then the next step then would be Christmas Fantasy. Does the council usually agree to that date, or it's always the second Saturday?
It's always, yeah.
Always the second Saturday in December. So this year, it'll be December 9th. I plan on it following the same schedule as in the past, which is about 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I have started some of the coordination work with lining up our very special guests, Mr. and Mrs. Claus. The dentist has agreed to do the horse-drawn wagon rides again in town. So I would say in the next, probably right after Halloween, we'll start reaching out to individual uptown businesses to make sure they still plan on participating. The orthodontist's office is going to coordinate the scavenger hunt again, and usually we just check in with everybody. Are you going to be open? What kind of activity do you think you'll have? And oftentimes, we're donated a raffle prize that has been part of a silent raffle, free raffle at the Fire Hall tonight of the event. Any question on any of those things? And I will definitely look for help, hopefully, for doing the reach out to the merchants when it comes to checking in them to make sure they want to participate. Last year, Mindy Galavine was tremendous help in going business-to-business, following up and making sure people knew when what was happening and how they were participating, so.
Can you help for both the Christmas Fantasy and the Halloween event?
If you want to help for Halloween, I will reach out to Amy at the diner. But for sure, Christmas, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. That's all.
Any questions for Megan? Counsel? Nick Corset, thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Shirley, do you have anything as a department?
I just have that Spartan Fence, they fixed the fence, right, Kevin?
I'm sorry?
Fixed the fence at the...
Yes, Spartan.
Okay, so they fixed the fence. Their original bid, I think, was $1650, and they gave us a $500 discount, so we paid $1,150 for that repair.
So Spartan Fence fixed the fence, and they took $500 off the price as a donation for the tornado disaster fund. Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you for that. Kevin?
You're up. Good evening, everybody. Lots of tornado news. Most of the demolition is complete. There's still some puddings in place. We did find an old footing, a large chunk of concrete at the DPW site that they worked pretty much a whole day on and we got nowhere. So Smith Sand and Gravel is doing the work. Had a conversation with them. They said that they could remove it for a slight upcharge, so I contacted the insurance company, and everybody agreed that it's in the city's best interest to get that removed. So that will be taken care of, one of those unforeseen expenses that you don't want to find, but it's, it's quite large. The new garage door is installed and working at the DPW garage, the back door. The cost of that was around $12,000. That was funded by the insurance. The fence repair, as Shirley mentioned, was completed by Spartan Fence. We had salvaged enough leftover materials that were stored in the storage barn to put a temporary metal roof on the salt barn. We finished that this week, so we have the tarps off. It's multicolored, and it looks funny, but it's, it's functional, so if you'd like to admire that, you can see it really well from the park. So we had to move the gas pumps to do the demolition down at the DPW. There were some fees involved with that, and the insurance company agreed to help us out with that. We had to have the tanks pumped down, and then we moved them with the equipment. We had a new pad form, moved them over, and then we had to get electrical out to them. We have scheduled the repair of the gutters for the City Hall building. They should be starting that within a few weeks. The dangerous tree removal on Second and Third Street, there was one on Green Street, is complete. We have stumps. We'll probably have to budget for stump grinding or stump removal from leftovers of the standing trees that didn't get uprivet. They're just going to, they're safe now, so they're just going to have to be there until we figure out a plan for those, or we just leave them forever and let them rot. We should probably have them removed so that the landscape looks somewhat normal in the future, but we can talk about that down the road, maybe next budget year. The, where all the stumps had ripped out of the ground, we have removed all those. We put in temporary repairs where the sidewalks used to be and filled in the holes with dirt and topsoil, so they're passable. They just don't look the best. I kind of wanted to get counsel's feelings on if they think that we should start replacing some of the damaged sidewalks. I don't have a bid or a quote. Ryan Cordier has done lots of work with us, has agreed to work with us on an ongoing basis. He's got all the tools and equipment to do sidewalk repairs, and he typically is very reasonable on his rate. And I could have him bid the whole project if, if that's what you'd like to see. I think getting it started, and we can do like a truckload at a time, and we have money in the Streets Fund slated for sidewalk repair, and I figured it'd be best if we started, you know, when we're available, work through it. And we have, within that fund, that certain amount that's slated for sidewalks, we wouldn't exceed that, and it's not necessarily a budgeted item, but I just wanted to kind of feel everybody out, and if they want me to start on that, we could start as soon as next week. We probably get some done this year before winter snowfall starts and people can clear their sidewalks and do things like that.
Are all those sidewalks, Kevin, on Second and Third Street, or are some of them on Green Street?
I believe most of the, all the sidewalk on Green Street is intact. I haven't noted any damage there. There's one spot here at City Hall.
Oh, that's right.
There's a couple spots on Third Street, and then most of it's on Second.
What does the bidding process look like amongst the new? But is there like a closed envelope bid, public, open envelope style? And that's how it is in HVAC industry of this?
Basically, I would just secure quotes or a quote, and then we would move forward from there. Council approval if we wanted to do some sort of, I just get three prices.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The work for the tornado-related expenses that we've incurred so far has been very different from the bid process we would typically be seeing.
Because it's urgent.
Because so much of it was urgent and had to be done immediately. Kevin, of course, always does a great job at trying to get us the best price, but typically for other types of things, like we had the bids for where that engineering thing was called that we just...
At RFP for engineering, we did a sealed bid for that.
Okay.
We had two responses for that, and we approved Wolverine to do more than...
High-dollar stuff.
Typically, or like bigger projects.
Right.
We also have a purchasing policy that sets a limit for if it exceeds this amount, that's when you go out for bid.
Okay.
And I couldn't tell you that amount, but I just know it exists.
I was just curious.
Yeah, just trying to answer your question without the actual book in front of me to say this is what we do.
And put a lie detector test on it.
I talked to Michigan Recycling, and I'm working on potentially lower cost to have the storm debris ground up and hauled out. We would eliminate some of the stuff they were offering and just do a basic cleanup back there and make it look similar to what it was before the storm. He was supposed to get back with me before tonight, and I haven't heard from him, so I know he's busy. Everybody's busy with all the, the tree work and storm damage and everything lately. When I get something more on that, I plan on bringing that to you as well. In other news, the tree at the Green House, the dead tree that we brought up during a council meeting, we had that removed and taken down to make it safe, so there's not branches falling down on the road and sidewalk anymore. And then sewer water and street operations are ongoing as normal. Is there any questions or comments?
Counsel, do you have a discussion you'd like to have in regard to Kevin's question about moving ahead with sidewalk repairs now?
I think we should try to do as much as we can. Put a date like November 15th, November 20th kind of ending. That's about a good time where you start getting weather, it's going to start really bothering you.
Yeah, I, I would do it a truckload at a time and, and see how far we could get with that, and then kind of plan out what we're doing. And I would try to keep the costs under my spending limit. I would just manage that and do it, you know, ongoing. And I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm not going to overspend in that budget, because I work pretty closely with Megan on what I can and can't do. Since I'm new to this position, while I'm not as new, I just got my one-year anniversary, so I've been torturing you guys for a year already. That's goodbye.
Happy anniversary, Kevin.
It's been a while, man.
Well, we're glad you're here.
I agree with Bob, that as much as we can get done before the weather turns bad. I think it's just a good faith effort on the city's part to get our street sidewalks at least back to the state they were prior to the tornado.
And what I would like to see is city trucks on those streets doing that work and not a high-dollar company coming in and just blowing through it and getting in and out and getting their money. We're going to take our time. We're going to make sure the sidewalks are right and back to normal, and I think we could stretch our budgets a little bit further that way, so.
And we do have money coming in, you know, in our donations. Certainly, we can cover what we can with our budget, but if we need, you know, another thousand or whatever, I mean, we can pull it out of there because it is a result of the tornado damage, so Megan will, Megan will make sure that gets done. Right, Megan?
The ready-mix company might give you a little discount on your load when you tell them it's what it's for.
I'll work with Ryan on that. I've not had luck with the concrete companies trying to order stuff. I can answer the phone for me, but when Ryan calls them, they answer and ask how much do you want, where do you want it, so.
And...
I guess we don't contract enough with them or use enough of their product, so, and that, and people don't know who I am either, so that's kind of the problem.
Well, you've only been here a year, so.
We're, I'm working on.
You just need to get meaner with them, and they'll...
Maybe.
Not concrete ready-mix people. That's the wrong attitude. You will be put on the bottom of the list, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kevin. Committee reports.
I have an update from SESA.
Okay.
Since we had a special meeting on Tuesday.
For those who might not know, Bob Porter is out one of our two representatives to the SESA board, so you will give that away.
So we had a special meeting on Tuesday, and the board determined that the chief's position is, serves at the pleasure of the board, and the board decided that we no longer wanted the service of our current chief. If you didn't know, the chief has been on paid leave for about three months, so that part of it is over. We are going to start looking for an interim chief, but it won't be tomorrow.
Anything else, Bob?
No, thank you.
Just a couple of quick items. The ordinance committee will be holding a meeting next Thursday, twelfth of October, 10:00 AM here in the council chambers to continue our discussion on a couple of ordinances that we've been, been working on. The animal ordinance that I spoke of is moving forward. We're getting ready to have that, to go to our city attorney probably early next week and optimistically we'll be able to have that on hopefully next agenda as a first reading to take another crack at upnitting our animal slash pet ordinance activity. On another note, I also set on the planning commission and just let everyone know that the master plan update that we've talked about in here before is moving forward. A draft is being developed with a lot of work from the company McKenna that we contracted with to help guide us in that effort. We're, at our last meeting began to see some draft materials. We're continuing to try to get as much resident and community input as possible going into that master plan. To that end, one of the representatives from McKenna, along with some of the planning commission members, will be at the farmer's market on October the fourteenth at McQueen House to try to take any additional input that any attendees at that activity would like to share as we, as we move forward. There is still the opportunity for input to the survey if anyone hasn't done that already. Encourage you to go online onto our website. Takes about ten minutes to, to go through and complete the survey. We're at a hundred and twenty-some respondents right now. Would like to get up if possible to a number of two-hundred to get a good cross-section of resident and community input. Comments, questions?
When was the ordinance meeting again, Larry?
Thursday morning next week on the fourteenth. Oh, excuse me, the twelfth.
It's the twelfth.
The twelfth at 10:00 AM in here.
Just an update for, are you done? I'm sorry.
Please, I am.
Just an update on the parks. We, I think I just brought it up last meeting, we had two bids come in for the pavilion. Hopefully, we can get the third one.
Tomorrow.
Hope, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Okay. If, if we can, if we can get the third bid by tomorrow, we might have a special meeting so that we can look at all three of them and then pick out which one we wanna go with and give it to the insurance so we can start getting stuff ordered. Because as of right now, I've talked to both bids that we have already and they have nothing starting, they have nothing planned, starting the spring of next year. So hopefully, we can start ordering stuff, the supplies, and they can get it under schedules.
Any questions for Chad or for Larry or Bob? Okay. Presentation and approval of the bills.
I move that we approve the bills as presented at the panel, the authorized.
Second.
We have a motion from Bob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Old business is next and we don't have any of that, so we'll move into new business. Our first new business is basically a discussion. No, no definite decisions to be made tonight because this is our first time really talking about this as a council. When the department heads and I met to prioritize the repairs and cleanup after the tornado, the subject came up about the antique fire truck. Well, it's called a fire truck, but it never really served as a fire truck. So what it truly is, is a 1929 Ford antique truck that was at some time in the last thirty years painted red and made to look like a fire truck. The city of Perry received it as a donation from Stiley Ferris, for those of you who, like me, who are old enough and remember who he is. Evidently, nobody else in the room is, so anyway. That's okay. Anyway, but it has only been used a few times in parades in the past. It's not been used for five years or so and used very seldom before that. So during our department head meeting, we said, well, we're paying insurance on the truck. And it was in one of the buildings that got demolished in the tornado, but it, the truck, did not have damage to it. It was dirty, but it wasn't damaged. And Jeff Tobias from the fire department actually was very worried about it, so he got a flatbed truck and then he and Scott Grinnell came and took it to Jeff's pole barn so it would have a place to live until we could have a place to store it again. So that was very nice and we appreciate that. But the question then comes up, do we wanna keep this truck or shall we sell it? So just in anticipation of the questions that might come up in regard to that, I made a few phone calls. I did call and talk with Tim DeLu and told him of our thoughts and wondered if the fire department or SESA did wanna buy it. He said, I'll get back to you. We don't have any money, he said, but I'll get back to you. I said, I understand. So they're still thinking about it, I guess. I made other phone calls too and I called one of our local people here who's involved in antique car shows and stuff and asked him if he would research that and see what it might be worth. And his feedback on that was that it would be somewhere between ten and fourteen thousand dollars. In a good sale, it might bring more. It's insured for eleven thousand seven hundredths, so those numbers fall right together. So discussion, more information you might want. I did also, before I close my mouth here, I did talk to Justin and said, this truck, to the best of my research, was donated to the city. It was not purchased with city money. Can we just sell this or does it have to go to a vote of the people, like the land that we own south of town had to? And so he didn't think it did, but was going to research it and get back to me, so I haven't heard back from him yet. So what are your thoughts?
Does it run?
It, it did.
It did.
It did. I don't know if it still does.
If we were to keep it, what are your thoughts of what we're going to use it for? Are we going to put money into it to restore it even further?
I don't think it needs restoration. It has an older restoration that was done on it and it looks fairly good in the state that it's in. But the, an older vehicle like that requires constant maintenance to keep it up and running, so there's.
Needs to run.
With the insurance cost and overhead of the maintenance, and then you gotta get them out and run them and drive them once in a while to keep it working. It's not an easy vehicle to drive. Nobody can just jump in there and go. You have to know how to drive a vehicle that type. It is, it's just gonna be an ongoing cost for the city.
How much are we paying in insurance? Do we know this? Do you know that, Megan?
No, because our policy is just one very large policy.
I personally say try to sell it because if we haven't done anything with it for five years, what are we gonna do in the future?
Well, you gotta think it's been sitting in that barn for five years and then mother nature took the barn away from it, so. I, I would say try to sell it.
I lived here for seven years and I didn't even know they had it. Except that I told me that he hauled it to a park. So it's not, and I go to the parades quite often, so never went, I never saw it, didn't have no idea we had something like that. So hiding it away doesn't help either.
No.
If we sell it, I'm sorry. I would say if we sell it and we have this money, I think the intent of a donation like that is probably to bring pride to the city. So is our intent to reuse those funds or something else to bring joy to the community or would it be to?
That would be part of the decision process that we could go through.
Because I'm all for selling it based on the cost and then that's.
Kevin really, really wants the money though to go in the, what do you call that fund? The vehicle fund, the?
Motor pools. Motor pools will pay for the maintenance thus far.
Yeah.
And we have some big purchases coming up with the motor pools. That was my thought, I want to do with the funds.
And since money has come out of a certain fund to maintain it, it probably should at least a portion of it go back into that, although it might be difficult to determine how much over the years in, in, you know, money that's put into it.
I would suggest if, if we sell it, we decide that, I don't disagree with putting some of it into the motor pool, a portion of it should maybe go into the parks as a give back to the community for the gift.
I was understanding, Kevin, that a plow truck is hopefully coming and the one that you have right now is a little itty-to-drive.
Yeah, we're, we're in the process of purchasing a new tractor truck that was, that was slated to be purchased first. So that's been ordered and the next, the next purchase, when the tractor is paid off, is gonna be a plow truck.
Yep. Kevin, Kevin did also tell us that there is a municipal auction coming up.
We sold our one-ton dump truck last year in the fall time in the October auction at Sheridens. It ends at the end of October, so there's not a big window if we wanted to auction it for the big pictures and list it. We also haven't come across a title for it, so I don't know that we have one for it. It might just be a bill of sale. We, we need to figure out legally how we can sell it if that's the goal, but we'll have to do some research on that, figure it out.
We have, we have the VIN number and that's as much as we have.
The Secretary of State knows how, I can tell you that. Said they don't store records past ten years for vehicle VIN ID numbers and that's not a good reason.
Based on the, the phone calls, and I, I called a lot of people that I thought might have any information about this vehicle. And one of them suggested that I talk to Perry Township and so I called and talked to Troy Parmerly and he said, boy, I can tell you, we don't have a title on it. He said, I would know, because he's very meticulous about that record. He said, but no, I've never seen a title on that vehicle. So I think we're just gonna have to get whatever the DMV will give us or sell it to somebody that's willing to just take a bill of sale and get their own whatever. But again, we can't do anything for sure with it until Justin gives us the go. But if, if you all know tonight what you wanna do with it and wanna make up a motion, feel free to do that. If you wanna think about it some more and bring it back to the table, next meeting, we can do that.
I would be in favor of moving forward with, to sell it, gives SESA the opportunity, you know, to decline first or to say.
First refusal.
Yeah, right, first refusal if you will, Bob, and then from there on, figure out what the best avenue is for listing it and selling it.
Have you talked to Kyle about the title? Because, you know, the police can look at and verify the VIN, fill out a paper.
I haven't talked to him, no.
It might just be as easy as that, Kevin, you kind of want that.
We'd have to find, get a better idea of the value of it, because you wanna pick the right auction too.
Well, I think with the, the insurance is eleven thousand seven hundred something. Eleven thousand five hundred twenty-six. And then the local guy that does antiques, he told me between ten and fourteen.
Yeah, I think the numbers are close. I think just like something a little bit, so he does it more, yeah. And then find the right auction. The municipal auction might not be the right place for it.
It may not be. There's a classic car auto trader website that lists vehicles that go back to the nineteen twenties.
Right.
That might be a good spot to, to look. And there, and it might take a little while to sell, would be as instantaneous as an auction, but probably get a chance of getting the best price out of it ultimately.
Look at it as some sort of, this wouldn't happen until, couldn't happen until the spring, but it is, uh, that's like a fundraiser, so an auction fundraising thing, in fact, it'd be one item that you auction off, but it'd have to be like a minimum bid, whatever that minimum bid is.
Yeah, even if we put it in an auction, we'd wanna have a reserve.
Yeah.
Well, we do have a prepared motion here if you, if anybody is interested in making that, if you wanna add the things we've talked about, or again, if you wanna wait until Justin tells us and then come up with a new resolution at that point.
Can I find the first one?
Yeah, sure.
I move that we approve the sale of nineteen twenty-nine antique fire truck.
We have a motion by Jacob, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Good job, Jacob.
Thank you.
I have made notes on all your comments and I'll bring back to you what I find out from Justin and other things that you've talked about. Okay, moving on then on our agenda. Oh, talking about, Bob made a comment at the last meeting about trying to establish a plan for people to be able to replace their trees. And so just bringing that back here tonight is to, how do we wanna develop that plan? Do we want to have a few council people or people from the community to determine how that's gonna be done or shall we just as a council say? Because the city certainly doesn't wanna be responsible for those trees. We're not responsible for trees in the city. We cleaned up the trees that were safety issues and that was because it was a safety issue. So we took out a lot of trees, but it was for safety reasons. And I'd be delighted for people to be able to put trees back where they lost them if they want them. Now, not everybody might want a tree back where it was before. If they're not gonna plant it where it was before, do they still got one? I, you know, there needs to be some criteria, some, and probably something that makes it very clear to the people getting the trees that the city is not responsible for the tree. They have to water it, they have to nurture it, they have to take care of it. So those are my thoughts, open to discussion.
Everything, I don't disagree with anything you said. It is the homeowner's responsibility, but we should have limitations on what can be planted so we don't get certain unwanted trees that get or considered, now considered evasive, like all our beautiful pear trees. I know I brought this up before, are considered invasive species. So we couldn't, I know the ordinance committee had been working on that at one time, one time, so I'd be happy to help with that. Find it out, you know, okay, you can, you can plant this variety or, or, you know, have a dozen species that we could plant, whatever that list is.
But we probably wanna let the homeowner's questionnaire, mail them a questionnaire, do you want your, do you want trees planted or something like that? We need to ask them.
Well, yeah, I have to be careful how I impose it because then that would be like, you're almost saying, oh, if you wanna replace, come see us. So, because I know the city's not gonna pay for them, but we can try to get, if we got a hundred people, let's say, because I don't know how mature you lost my time in, that want a tree, then we can, I can go to some of the people I know and try to get a reasonable rate on a tree at a decent size.
For them to purchase?
Yes.
Got it.
So we get this many people, we got, yeah, like a consortium of people to buy the trees. So we don't get twigs, we get actually a tree kinda like you planted for dead, so.
So then they would know that if the tree died, it's under warranty, they can go back to the company not to come to us.
No, nurseries do not give you a warranty.
Some do. Nash does.
Sure, it's retail. I'm talking wholesale.
Oh, okay. But just so they don't, so they know that it's their responsibility and we're not the warranty.
Correct.
we're not the warranty holders, they can go back to the company.
Consumers has like guidelines that they recommend for trees planted around their infrastructure. We could come up with some sort of sheet or guideline as to tree size and height in the right way or out in the front yards, that kind of curb the root issue in the sewer and the entanglement and the curb stops and the damaging of the sidewalks.
And I think I brought this up a couple weeks ago, that Consumers does have a tree planting program, that it was when all this happened, the deadline to apply was like July 31st or something like that, so I've got it marked on my calendar to, to reach back out to Consumers. I think I'm going to reach out to, I think it was Durand that I saw had participated in this program. I feel like it was Durand had some kind of contract with Consumers for this city beautification project. But again, you have to be picked by consumers to say, yes, we'll provide the trees. And I don't know whether they were free at a discount, I love, consumers just provide the trees, because they were, you know, think of Poly Street where they came in and took out all those trees. I, I think it's like a, we took some down, we have these offers for replanting, maybe not in the same spot, but kind of like the rebuilding of those.
Reforestation.
Kevin, how difficult would it be to come up with the names of the homeowners and addresses where people lost trees?
I believe we already have that list written down for where we do the tree removals and stuff, you know.
And when I reached out with the resources after the last meeting where we discussed it, I was given a couple of resources, many of them needed a 50% match.
Yeah.
So I guess we need to look at, what are we willing to put forward?
And if Bob's able to get the wholesale prices at least, and we, you know, in our letter that we send to the people who lost trees, say that we have this available for this list of trees at this reduced rate, are you interested in purchasing one? I mean, that, that's the only way I know of, that the city's not paying out city money for a few people's trees. And it would be different if it was donations that came in specified for tree replacement, then that obviously would be used for that, but other donations coming in for city cleanup and restoration, I, I would feel uncomfortable with that. Maybe, Bob, if you can come up with the list of trees, and then Kevin, if you could get us, Shirley or I, the list of who the people are. Then we could come up with a potential letter, bring it back to a meeting, have you guys look it over and go from there? That'd be good? So we'll bring this back to the next meeting. With a letter, a potential letter, a draft. That's what Larry calls it, a draft. And our next meeting is October.
Twenty-first.
Okay.
Twenty-first.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our new business discussion. Any other business that might come before council at this time? Anyone here to make any comments related to any matter? Again, Kevin, I didn't realize it was your anniversary, but we all say, we're so glad you're here.
We're glad.
Any other agenda items that anyone's aware of that needs to go on for the next meeting?
Kind of, we start talking, probably within our next couple meetings, we need to begin to think about whether or not we're going to have a Christmas holiday lighting contest again.
Yeah, right, yeah.
And as near as I could, could tell, it looks like it may have been the end of October that we, last year, made that, made that decision.
Okay, we'll put that on the next agenda. And Chad, did you know you have the.
I just, I just stole his map, so I can see it.
See what you're supposed to be. Any other agenda items for next meeting?
Hopefully, we'll have the animal ordinance, first readings of a number of proposed updates to that, depending on Justin's feedback.
Yeah. And I guess put the fire truck discussion back on, hopefully, that will prompt Justin to get me out in the answer. So now at 7:52, this meeting is adjourned.